Good evening, and welcome to the Emmett Spur Town Meeting. From the call to meeting to order, this time we asked everybody to silence their phones. And we asked everybody to stand for a pledge allegiance flag. Thank you. Future upcoming meetings, we have the Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting on March 18th, 7:00 PM here in this office and on Zoom. We also have the Comprehensive Workshop, March 25th, again here in this office and on Zoom. And the following Board of Commissioners Meeting on April the 1st, at 7:00 PM, again in this office and on Zoom.
Commissioner, who arrived to two meetings to add that were decided after the printing of the agenda. There will be a Planning Commission Meeting at 7:00 PM here on March 26th. And there will be a Board of Appeals Meeting here on March 19th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 5th and the February 12th meetings. Do we have a motion to accept one or both of those meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept both minutes from the February 5th, 2024, meeting and the February 12th, 2024 meeting.
Thank you. We have a second.
Our second.
Motion to debate the Commissioner Donald, second with Commissioner Sweeney. Any other discussion?
I just have one, one item. On February 5th, halfway down the first page, after a lengthy discussion, it was decided that Commissioner Turnquist will write a set of minutes for February 5th on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. The way I, my recollection is that the mayor asked for all commissioners to take an agenda item and write minutes as they would like to see them. And so if we could just maybe amend that paragraph and then I'm good with the rest.
I don't know that that's what was said. I had Sabrina go back and look after your email, but we can go back and, and check.
I mean, the mayor definitely had a discussion about giving everybody a homework assignment. And I definitely recall that.
I guess.
And you were all tardy on your homework just.
I guess if you wanted to change the minutes, that's you had to to what you think would look better or work better.
Well, I mean, I did, in fact, prepare minutes for February 5th, and I handed them out to the commissioners at our February 12th meeting.
Correct.
So we were going to follow up and have a discussion about the minutes after all the commissioners came to the table with what they'd like to see.
I don't have a problem amending them if that's the board, if that's what the board would like.
I remember the discussion you're talking about, and that was what was discussed. And then in the end, I thought we had then agreed that because you was submitting a set of minutes as a template.
Which I did.
And I think the rest of us then said, no homework assignment. And moved on, but so I think because of that, I think the minutes were probably, in my opinion, probably accurate, reasonably accurate. Commissioner, Commissioner Donald, you have any?
I, that's their chronology that I, the sequence of events that I recall.
I, I knew it, though. Commissioner Turquist was gonna submit some minutes, but I had no problem with the minutes, the way they were submitted, so I didn't need to change anything on them.
And Commissioner Turnquist did submit.
That was what we.
That's, that's done. Now, I don't know if anybody looked at them or not. All right. All right, within, any other discussion?
So what's the decision on correcting the text?
I'm trying to find out, does Commissioner Sweeney or Commissioner Donald want to, you know, agree to an amendment?
You want amended?
Sure, so amended.
So amended to say what? Like I get some kind of clear direction?
Your, your guidance is true. Modify the minutes to demonstrate that Commissioner Turnquist did. Oh wait, no, to see that though. You know what? I'm going to withdraw my motion. Sorry, I want to withdraw my modification and I'm going to take the staff option. If staff is still willing to review, as you just said a few moments ago, if I understood that correctly, then maybe we can have those have that reviewed because I do remember the chronology as Mr. Hoover, President, Vice President Hoover brought forward. So I just want to make sure I'm accurate. Because I do recall that the mayor had put forward the homework and you had said that you were going to do your framework for the minutes, and I'm paraphrasing. So the impression that I had is similar to what Mr. Hoover had is that, you know, the homework was off and in alignment with what Commissioner Sweeney's saying. I see these minutes as sufficient, so I didn't need in my mind to create a new item, and that's what I expressed. So.
Okay.
So staff, if I could defer to you with permission from the board. And we can look at it again because I will say that's my recollection, but I'm a person, so therefore, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
I believe both recollection, recollections are correct. I think what is written in there was said, but I also agree that the mayor did offer up homework assignments. So I think both recollections are correct.
All right. So right now I have on the table a motion to accept both meeting minutes.
Correct.
We can let that motion die. We can take a vote and let it die, and you can, you can accept the motions for, you can create a motion for February 12th to accept it and February 5th to
investigate.
Investigate. Sorry. So, or if you always want to, if you just want to withdraw your motion for, for that, and then.
I withdraw my motion.
Commissioner Sweeney, you made a second. You go with a, yes, okay. All right. So do I have a motion to accept February 12th meetings as presented?
Do you have comments for February 12th?
No, I didn't think we were done disposing of February 5th.
I think we're going to come back to February 5th.
Come back, okay.
So that way we have investigation and I would assume, Mr. Hoover, you're going to bring it back as a motion from the board.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask for that one next because I know you want to meditate. So I'm asking about February 12th, or we go with February 12th? And if we are, do we have a motion to accept them?
So I make a motion to accept the February 12th, 2024 minutes as presented.
Our second.
Okay, motion to the meeting, second. Any additional discussion? Here, none, I asked for a vote, and all those in favor. Aye.
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 Aye. We're in a, motion carries for it, oh. All right. So now what's the motion for February 5th, town, town, me, town meeting minutes?
I can make a motion?
Yeah. Whatever you want to do.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of the mayor's homework assignment to have all commissioners take an agenda item and prepare a set of minutes for that agenda item.
Okay. Is there a second? Here, none, the motion dies. Do we have another motion to accept the minutes or some other modification?
I make a motion to have staff review the February 5th town minutes to establish the timeline for the homework assignment and Commissioner Turnquist's kind of offered to do the minutes. Her sample of the minutes.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Motion, amazing, second. Do we have any further discussion? Here, no, we call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for it, oh. Thank you.
So the, the minutes are table till April? Is that my understanding? Because that wasn't part of the motion?
Yes, for February 5th. The, the town meeting on February 5th.
All right, next item.
Can I, can you make an announcement about Commissioner Bowman-Pallett? If we need that for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so as you may now understand, Commissioner Bowman-Pallett is absent today due to some family sicknesses. And she apologizes for her absence, and we expect that she'll be back here at our next meeting with the March 18th workshop meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is police report.
It is still myself and Deputy Bartholomew in town. We used three vacation days. Myself and Bartholomew both had Police One training. It's our in-service training. It's online. We both had CPR recertification. No fleet issues, no accidents. We handled 217 calls for service. We had two arrests and 25 traffic stops. Deputy Bartholomew identified the suspect that was stealing change out of the vending machine in the laundromat. Charges are filed, so that's good. No idea how long he's been doing it, but I'm sure it's not his first time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the deputy? Thanks, sir. Next agenda is town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for January of 2024. I'll just summarize some of the key areas. Related to streets, staff continues to work with the electrical contractor on the main street lighting project. Staff and contractors worked three different snow events in the month of January. And staff also responded after hours for the flooding event and had to close several, several streets that were flooding. Related to wastewater, for wastewater, we treated an average of 834,548 gallons per day and consumed 209,639 gallons per day, which meant we had 74.88% of the wastewater treated in the month of January was wild water. That was due to the large amount of rain we met, we received that month. We had one spill of untreated sewage. And that was 42,000 gallons on January 9th. We were above the plant design capacity for 20 days due to heavy rain, snow, and pumping back through the plant. Received approximately 7.7 inches of precipitation. The average is only 3.18, so we currently have a surplus of 5.58 inches over the last six months. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is at the spillway level, which is 16.6 feet. On page eight, you'll see the the well depths on the chart. You'll see the depths for well number one, two, three, four, and five as requested. And it also lists out the average well depths for each month in the month of, or in the year of 2023. And then on page 19 is the average well depths for 2024 for January. Water production, we produce an average 208,695 gallons per day and consume 209,639, which meant the amount of backwash water in the month of January was approximately 15.41%. Trash pickup will remain on Mondays during the month of March. And I listed out some of the meetings I attended and just a few of the, the noteworthy items that happened in the month of January.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on the town, town managers' report?
Yes, first, thank you for adding the well depth and the monthly numbers. I think it's a huge help to see kind of where we go throughout the year. The 2024 numbers for January, you said those are the average. Do we measure once per month or multiple times?
We mu, we measure daily. So if on page 18, those were the depths at the last day of January. And then on page 19 is the average for the month of January. I don't know that they measure daily, but it's more than once or twice a week.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Additional questions, comments? Thank you. Next item is the town planners report. Town plan is not here, so Ms. Will, you have that?
I have a few just things she noted. Ms. Shaw is on Zoom. If you have any questions related to the, the grant managers' report. I will note, happy to note, finally, grant number 22-1 is finally complete. The last piece of the puzzle escaped. The sewer plant was finished. For the planners' report, just some noteworthy items related to ongoing developments. Staff and the engineer continue to work with the distillery on their improvement plans. We actually just had a meeting today. St. Joseph's Church has been working with State Highway on an ADA ramp at the intersection North seat Avenue and DePaul Street. They are working in conjunction with our waterline project. The Emmett Ridge development is still in the pipeline. We've had a couple of meetings with a prospective developer. The Sustainable Communities Work Group met to review the community legacy grants. I think they had some follow-up questions related to some applications, so no final applications have been submitted as of yet. And the Department of Housing and Community Development's portal has been down for six months, so we do not have a grant agreement as of yet. And I just got notification this afternoon that it's finally up and we have to take some basic training. And then on March 25th is another public visioning workshop for the comprehensive plan. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions, comments about the planners' report? Grand administrator report? Any? And parking enforcement, we're good. Next agenda item is commissioner comments. Mr. Donald, any comments?
Sure, I'll try to be brief. I'll pack in there. Parks and Rec met. We had a very productive meeting. We interacted with, interacted. We came forward with some requests from town staff to address some issues in the park. Staff has been amenable to those and it's appreciated. It was a well-attended meeting and the votes were basically unanimous for, you know, looking to make some improvements from the, from the committee. Grateful to staff for responding to the turf damage on Carrot Court from one of our neighbors out there. They, the staff got out there fairly promptly and some it, it looked as if the, the plow had lost its line and there was some damage. And I'll say this quite frankly, usually I'm able to do it and clean it up and pack it down and, you know, it's done and done. It was more than I could do on my own in a, in a good hour. So thank you to staff for being so quick with it, especially Mr. Click and Ms. Will. I attended the FCPL Community Garden Discussion or a presentation by Mr. Dethridge. It was well-attended. There was a, a good and interested crowd, which is always nice to have. And it was a very interesting presentation, and I think it just reflects how solid a job Mr. Dethridge is doing with Community Garden 2.0. I met with new staff this past week, rather, last week I met with new staff. I had the opportunity to introduce myself. I also met with staff to talk about some things related to tonight's meeting. And I was asked a question from the community about the composting facility. Is the composting facility up and running as an enterprise, or is it still to be, to be opened?
Are you talking about the yard waste facility? I'm not aware of a composting facility.
I thought we had a composting facility off Creamery Court on the other side of 15?
We have a yard waste center.
Yard waste.
It's only yard waste and it's a dumpster. It's open first and third Saturdays.
Not the town's facility, but actually at the end of the line there, then what's the facility that's there? There's a lot of activity, or there seemed to have been a lot of activity when I was out there.
Creamery.
Like behind Emmett Spur Glass?
So Federal Stone will be going in there.
Okay.
The distillery will be going in there and the lauder has two lots.
Okay.
I'm not aware of a composting facility.
Maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I could very well be wrong. Wasn't there a composting facility coming to town?
There was supposed to be a mulch company coming to town on Creamery Road. We have not heard anything recently.
So maybe I mistook that. Okay, because that's the question that I had and someone else called in about that to me. Because it's like a radio show, they called in about that. But, uh, good, I'm glad we have an answer for that. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it for my comments.
Where's your turn, Chris? My comments?
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
Just when I might know that the little league started back up with their practicing, the fields were all full tonight. If anybody seen them when they went through. So be careful with all the kids running through. They'll be running across the streets and stuff to get to the park. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything I want to add, there is, I'm very thankful that the town staff and council who are all back had voted to put the new streetlights up on, on Main Street. It's much better than the on a plate way to say the junk they put up 10 or 12 years ago. The, the other ones, the current ones are, the old ones are just so dark a hazard are waiting to happen, but I do appreciate what they're doing. So far, I see East Main Street being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no, you don't get off that easy with me. Just a reminder, March 11th, the town office will extend its business hours from 07:00 to 5:00 PM. We will be keeping track of data to see how that, if we hit more customers in from the, from our community and how that works out. It's going to be on a six-month trial basis and I'll report back at the end of those six months to let you know how that worked out. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Maryland Municipal League Mayor's Conference in Annapolis. It was quite exciting. It, it was my first one and it was 106 mayors out of the 160 from the state that attended. So it was we got to spend several hours at the State House sitting in on both the, the House and the Senate side, and that was very interesting. I just want to give you a heads up. While taxes probably won't be going up, fees will. In the 45 minutes we sat on the House side, there were four fees that were increased, some by as much as 300 to 400%. So that's how we're going to balance our budget the way it looks. We're going to be balancing with fee increases. And after talking to our delegation, our senators, they said that there's 200 more that's, that's on the way. So that's, that's everything from hunting, seek a deer permits to they just realized that people with electric cars weren't paying gas taxes, so they are going to be given fees to pay for their electric cars. So it's everything in between there. So just be on the lookout for that. And it was amazing, the votes on this, after four or five minutes, we could predict what the votes were going to be. It was 102 to 39, 102 to 39. So, you know, all these people on whichever side, they're, they're, they're always right and these people are always wrong or vice versa. You know, it was amazing to see that not one other person would say, well, maybe they might be right over here. I'm going to jump over on this 102 to 39. I left that at that. A couple of the big things that came out of there. For every 100 jobs that are needed in municipalities, there are only 33 people applying for these jobs. So if you need a wastewater treatment plant, 100 people need a wastewater treatment operator. There's only 33 people out there that are applying for these jobs or eligible for these jobs. Everybody is suffering in this. Talking to a lot of the, the, the mayors on the eastern shore, they're sharing plant operators and just be a plant operator. I mean, they, they come in every day, they look at the paper and they go, yep, it looks good. I'll sign off for it. I'm going to my next town. So they really don't even have a plant operator. They have people running the plant, but there's somebody coming in and signing their name, and that's how they're, they're running their, their operations. That's kind of scary. So that we have a few citizens that are concerned about the cannabis laws. So we had a discussion on that. It's just not that anybody that has a, has a desire to to, to have a little cannabis around is going to be able to open up a, a shop or a distribution center. It's done by, first of all, it's $5,000 to put in a application. So you got to have some backing. The fee per year is $40,000. So there must be a profit in this stuff. And the licenses are given out by a lottery system. So it's just not like somebody can say, hey, I want to, I'm going to take the the building on the square and turn it into a cannabis shop. It's, it's not a distribution center. It's not that easy. So that should calm some of the fears that they were going to pop up everywhere. And the laws are rather strict on where they, they can be put. It's almost the same as a liquor store. They have to be so far away from a school zone, so far away from a church and what have you. So that should calm our fears a little bit, but we're watching that and they promised they would let us know if applications come in that affects our area. So we'll keep you updated on that. I asked staff today to start to explore the possibility of having one enterprise fund for water and sewer. I was sitting in a work group of, of eight other mayors, and I was the only one there that had two separate enterprise funds for water sewer. They all, they were combined.
Maybe that's because you're doing it right.
Well, I don't know. They seem to not have the problems we have, but I don't know. But anyway, it seemed to be the way of the state. Now, we're going to find that out a little bit later, aren't we, ladies? Thank you. But it's, it's something for us to look at to see if that might be a way, an easier way to keep, keep our books and to to do whatever with funding, what's legal and what's not legal. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. And on Saturday, Sunday, Sunday, this weekend, I was able to, to meet with three Mount St. Mary's alumnus who are interested in opening a roastery, which I thought we were going to have chicken, but it's actually to make beans for coffee. With the hopes that it expands and their plans are to open a coffee shop here in town with that. So today I was able to hook them up with the Chamber of Commerce, the Frederick County Economic Development People and with Matty, our grants person. They, they have a meeting scheduled for Friday, so hopefully we have another business coming to town. And I know I'm running out of time, so just finally, I'd like everybody to, to offer some thoughts and prayers to both the Turnquist and the Bowman-Pallett family who both have suffered tragedies and sickness over the last couple of weeks. So our thoughts and prayers are with them. That's it.
Thank you. You'll be on a three-minute timer next time. Next agenda item is public comments. Mr. Sloan? It will be you.
What would happen if I didn't sign that paper? Spring is coming, pollen's in the air. The yard waste place, is there a possibility of either opening it like every other weekend, which would only add two days a year? Or expanding the hours, because periodically the little trailer I take over there, I've, I've got like two or three runs over for the grass clippings, the tree limbs and everything else. And I don't want to have the stuff sitting around the yard.
To buy a bigger trailer.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Next agenda item is administrative business. This presentation by Gary Kestew on National, National Civil War Monument. The microphone, yes.
Can you hit the button?
Turn your button on. There you go.
You got it. All right. All right, I'm from Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. You all know where that is. And I am a sculptor. I've been a working sculptor my entire working life. I have monuments and art pieces around the country and in Europe. The majority of the pieces are historically related. I love the history. And I always wanted to be a sculptor. I came from a coal mining family in Preston County, West Virginia. My daddy could never figure it out. And so here we are. Several years ago, I learned something that absolutely I learned something that absolutely shocked me. And that was the fact that of all the wars, the United States has been involved in, they all have national monuments, mostly in Washington, D. C. There's one conflict that does not have a national monument. The American Civil War. The very war that made us what we are today. I find that absolutely fascinating, disgusting, and goes on and on. I think that needs to be corrected. Several years ago, I put together a team of historians that I had worked with over the years, the decades. Most of them have passed away now, but they're very well known individuals. We would all recognize their names, I'm sure. Researchers, authors, that sort of thing. We put together a storyline that explains the war. And it's very balanced, very equal, and certainly educational. Now, the one thing you have to understand, if you look at monumentation, you go to Washington, D. C., you look at those monuments. The World War One monument was just dedicated a few years ago. I was down there right after it was done. And I was speaking with some old vets who were walking around looking at it. And I said, I'm real proud of you, boys. You finally got your monument from World War Two. Right? The World War Two Memorial. They looked at me and they said, we're proud as well, but it doesn't say a damn thing about what it took to get it. In other words, if you look at monumentation, they have all the wonderful art, eagles flying tablets, but it says nothing. In other words, they are not there to educate, they're only there to applaud. All right, I take a different approach in what I do. I love to educate. I want those kids to learn and to grow up and understand how this country came to be. I designed a national memorial using the information from those historians. We put it together. I produced a model of it. I have it here and I'll show it to you in a few minutes. I produced a model and I started sculpting on the work while I'm doing other projects as well. One third of the project is already completed. And I'm continuing. I am looking for site to erect this memorial. This memorial economically is a gold mine. And I say that simply because of the economic impact study that we had done by the University of Michigan. They came back stating it would probably deliver around 300,000 people a year to the site. It will produce around 15 to 18 million dollars a year to the site. Now, that certainly is going to do some good for the area around that site. It's going to produce jobs. It's going to produce an income base. Those people come, they spend their money, they learn and they leave. You're not building schools for their kids. You're not building new roads for the development out back. All you're doing is showing a national memorial that has not been erected. I'll show you. The monument monument model is here and you all can take a look at it. It is, I'll set it over here. It's made in a circle. It's 90 feet diameter with 10 foot high wall, granite walls. Within those walls, four openings, northeast, southwest. Basically, a lot of allegorical approach here. On the outside, you have 16 bronze portraits. Those portraits have been selected, those individuals have been selected by the historians. Why? Because of their importance in that time of history. Now, that's very balanced. There's white, there's black, there's the whole nine yards. Very good. All right. If you go through one of the openings to the inside, you have 16 military leaders. Those 16 military leaders, the portraits are military individuals who determined the outcome of the war. In between those 16 portraits, you have 20 event tablets. Now, what those are are large three by four foot, what we call Ba release. That show is basically a picture in relief that's been sculpted of events from the first shot fired at Fort Sumter to Lincoln being assassinated to the very end of Lee surrendering. All the 20 tablets are there. Once this is erected and open, there would need to be a gift shop. Who manages that gift shop? Who controls it? That's where the money goes. Now, we need to talk. What we need to do is I have a national fundraising company that is ready to kick it off. I need sight. How much sight? All right. We need about three acres. I wanted to place this memorial close to the Mason Dixon line because of that significance of that Mason Dixon line. If we place it there with that information center gift shop, whatever, you're going to have meeting rooms and things. It's going to produce a major, major, interesting site. Now, you've all heard of the History Channel. The History Channel has already filmed part of the making of this monument because they want to do a documentary on the National Civil War Memorial. What's that going to do for the area? We also have the American Bus Association. The American Bus Association contacts me on a regular basis saying, when and where, Gare, we need to put this on our tour list. They're coming. It's that simple. I need sight. So I'm ready to answer your questions. The brochure that I handed out earlier shows you what I do. And if you wish to see any of the work that's already been done, if you come to my studio in Gettysburg, you can see it face to face. We're not trying to hide a thing. It's out there. So that's the name of the game, not to hold you here for alone hours and hours. But questions, please.
I have one question that I'll so do you have a scope of work or proposal of 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 what all your ask really is and and what the expectation of that?
Oh, absolutely.
What it looks like?
We've got it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments from comments from the commission?
So you're asking for the land to be donated?
We'd love it to be donated.
Or or you interest, are you interested in purchasing land from the town? Okay. And then you have the funding and the backing to build the memorial.
And we will, we will get the funding that we need.
And then after it would be built, who would maintain the site?
The main, the site will be maintained by who controls the site. And I'll just throw it at you. Is it the city? Is it the National Civil War Memorial Commission? You know, is it an individual? It can be whoever. We, that has not been determined because we've not gotten that site. And there's a number of steps that have to be taken yet, please.
So all kind of negotiable at this point?
Well, it's it's it is.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's what I'm looking for really in that proposal. If you have the document, the scope, those questions and answers of what what your vision is.
Is there an area that you're interested in in particular near the Mason Dixon line?
Well, of course, like I said, I live in Gettysburg and Emmelsburg with 15 coming close. You want that easy on, easy off. So those buses can come in and drop those dollars and get back on 15 and take off. So I don't know the area. You do. That's it.
Mr. Donald, any questions? Not at this time. Commissioner Schmending?
We have a nice area. It's in the town limits on the others, on the east side of 15.
Yeah.
So that would be a nice place for it to go.
That would be an excellent place because again, you're getting right off 15 and you're there.
So what I recommend then is you get your proposal put together and sent into the town office and attention to the mayor for consideration for them to read it, review it and consider it and see where we go from there. Yay, nay, maybe. I don't know. See where we go from there. But but like I say, we're looking for a proposal that has, you know, a lot of the questions and answers that should come up and which
We have, we have a proposal that we put together. What I'd like to do so anyway, but we do have a proposal. And what we can do is put that together and get it to you. And then for any fine tuning or any particular questions that you have, then we would
We'll go from there.
We'll go from there.
Yep.
So that's the idea. And of course, my name, full number, the whole nine yards.
We got that.
I'm easily reached. And again, if you wish to see what we've done, we can certainly get that to you.
Appreciate it.
We have, we have photographs and all that sort of thing of everything that we've done to date. I thought you had bring.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question. Yeah, we brought it in.
You're in trouble now.
I thought we did. So anyway, any questions?
So that's all we have for now and then we'll
There you go.
You submit, you submit that proposal to town, to town office and
I'll get it down to you.
Now, we'll we'll go from consideration from there.
Very good. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. The next agenda item is consent agenda, which consent agenda, which there is none. So that brings us to treasures report.
Yes, the cash activity report as of February 27th. The town has a cash balance of 10,912,867. We had deposits totaling 189,083, withdrawals of 368,861. Operating balance forward of 10,733,089. The top 10 checks are listed there on the page if you have any questions. And just a quick breakdown, the general fund balance of 2 million, capital project fund, 530,000. Our water fund, 386,000. ARPA money available, 2,836,694. Sewer fund including sewer fund capital projects, 4,895,703 for a total of 10,664,369. You have any questions?
No questions. Okay.
I just have a quick comment. I'd like to to thank our accountant for giving us this detailed report. I think it really gives us a good overall picture. And if there's anything else that you want us to add to it, Kim seems to be able to make things happen. So Kim, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Next agenda item is planning commission report. Is there one?
You didn't have a meeting.
No meeting?
I don't think they had one.
No, no report.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us down to our agenda items. For we're all here tonight is for FY 23 audit presentation.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
I have to step off the floor. Sorry. I have to step off the floor for a moment to talk to staff for a split second because I might be able to answer the question here about the
Say next. Okay.
All yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Mills. I'm an audit principal at De Leon and Stang, responsible for overseeing the annual audit. With me this evening is Addie Blick and staff, who is the audit manager, who is responsible for the day to day interactions with the staff.
That's the same report as the as the draft.
Do you think it would be helpful to dim the lights a smidge or are you good?
If we can dim them.
Is that better?
That's, that's
There we go. That good?
Yep.
Need more lights out?
The audit was completed in late December and for this evening's presentation, we prepared what we call an audit dashboard, which highlights some non financial as well as some financial highlights for mayor and commissioners. So we're going to start with some general audit information. Our responsibility as your auditors is to plan and perform the audit to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects and to issue an opinion on our financial, on your financial statements. Under item number one, you'll see that the town received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which means it was a clean audit report. Again, again, a clean audit report. We did identify one material weakness and one significant deficiency in internal controls. And we're going to speak about them a little bit later in the presentation. We found all transactions to be properly supported and recorded. There were no new accounting pronouncements adopted in the current period. We did identify several material misstatements and I'm going to ask Addie to because she can read it better than I can.
Sure. So the first material misstatement noted that was adjusted by town management was to decrease grant revenues, $36,400 in the water fund. Uh, so the first material misstatement noted that was adjusted by town management was to decrease grant revenues, thirty six thousand, four hundred dollars in the water fund and forty thousand, six hundred dollars in the sewer fund. We also recorded capital asset disposals of two hundred and seventy thousand water fund and fifty seven thousand, five hundred sewer fund. We adjusted the lessor receivable and related income. This had a handful of components, but we had to decrease the lessor receivable by seventy two thousand in the sewer fund, twenty eight thousand in the general fund and increase revenue by thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars for the sewer and decrease revenue by three hundred dollars for the general fund. And the last material misstatement noted was to record capital infrastructure cost and the related payable at June thirty twenty three of a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars.
The next item, um, we encountered no difficulties in performing the audit and had no disagreements with management. And as I mentioned, the audited, uh, financial statements in the uniform financial report were submitted to the state at the end of December. F, okay. A few financial highlights on a government-wide presentation. Um, you've heard our, our presentation in the past. We're going to be talking about some government-wide, um, focus as well as some fund level. This particular slide is looking at it on a government-wide basis. Bullet point number one, there was an overall government-wide change in that position of a decrease of about a hundred and nine thousand. The town's cash deposits were fully collateralized as required by state law as of June thirty, twenty twenty three. The town did contribute to the state retirement plan, um, ninety nine thousand on behalf of the employees. Um, the net pension liability at the end of the fiscal year was just over seven hundred ninety five?
Seven eighty five.
Seven eighty five. Yeah. Little challenged here. Again, no matter how big you think that font is, sometimes it's not as big as you need it to be. Uh, the total debt payments, uh, due within the next year were approximately.
A hundred and ninety thousand.
Thank you. Yep. Go ahead.
Total debt outstanding again across, um, all funds of the town was about five point two million dollars. Future lease payments due to the town under the lagoon lease of the sewer fund are approximately six hundred and sixty nine thousand. At June thirty, twenty twenty three, two hundred and fifty nine thousand and seven hundred and forty five thousand dollars is restricted net position of the water and sewer fund related to surcharge, surcharge fees collected in a previous year. At June thirty, twenty twenty three, nineteen thousand, seven hundred dollars of impact fees and nineteen thousand, four hundred is restricted net position of governmental activities. And the last bullet, three point one million dollars, uh, remains unspent of your ARPA funding. Again, in fiscal year twenty three, you received your second and final payment. This three point one million dollars is recognized as a deferred inflow of the water fund. And these funds are to be earmarked by June thirty, twenty twenty four and fully spent by June thirty, twenty twenty six. Here's a simple pie chart of the total assets of the town on a government-wide basis. Again, general, capital, water, sewer, all combined. So at the bottom, you'll see that we've noted that government-wide total assets were forty three point seven million, which was a one point one million dollar increase or three percent increase from the prior year. As you can see in the pie chart, the largest slice of the pie is your dark blue color, capital assets, net of related depreciation of thirty one point six million or seventy two percent. Second largest is the town's cash and cash equivalent balances of eight point four million or nineteen percent. If we follow along to the right of those, we'll see in the light blue color, you have restricted cash of just over a million dollars. You have investments or CDs, um, of about one point one million dollars. And then your receivable balances in the top left, again, amounts due to the town at June thirty, twenty twenty three were one point five million dollars or four percent. The opposite of our assets are the town's government-wide total liabilities. So total liabilities were six point six million, which was fairly comparable. As you can see, only a twenty three thousand dollar increase from the prior fiscal year. Again, the largest slice of the pie is the town's debt obligations, seventy seven percent or five point two million dollars still owed in principal debt payments at June thirty, twenty twenty three. The top left, the green color shows the town's net pension liability due to the state on behalf of its employees of seven hundred and eighty five thousand. And then accounts payable and accrued expenses are approximately six hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars or eleven percent with a small other balance of about nineteen thousand dollars. Keep going. Okay. No worries. Now we're going to switch from a government-wide focus, uh, and we're going to s- switch to looking at each, each individual fund. So we're going to start with the general fund and just focus kind of on bottom line numbers and how it fared revenue and expense year over year. So the general fund balance at June thirty, twenty twenty three was one point seven million, broken down into three separate components. A non-spendable balance of twelve thousand dollars, which represents prepaid expenses. A committed fund balance of a hundred and nine thousand, which is, uh, reserved for future employee pay, payouts. And the remaining one point six million of unassigned. Overall, at June thirty, twenty twenty three, there was an excess of revenues over expenditures of eighty eight thousand versus a slight deficiency in fiscal year twenty two of sixty six hundred dollars. Next. Uh-oh. Pause. There we go. Perfect. Here is a bar graph that shows the general fund revenues, uh, year over year, fiscal year twenty twenty two on the left-hand side in the darker blue color and fiscal year twenty three on the right-hand side of the bar graph in the lighter blue. So general fund total revenues were two point three million, which was an increase of a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars from the prior year. As we go across the major categories, taxes, intergovernmental and service charges, you can see that the balances remain fairly comparable, slight upticks in taxes as expected. But the other categories remained relatively the same. The other revenues did see an increase from about a hundred and nineteen thousand to two hundred and sixteen thousand. And this was largely due to interest rates being a lot better in fiscal year twenty three and the town earning significantly more interest on, uh, its cash deposits. The opposite side here, the general fund expenses, which were one point eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty three, plus a transfer to capital projects of four hundred and eight thousand for an overall increase of ninety one thousand dollars. You can see the general government expenses increased from about five hundred and ninety four thousand to six hundred and seventy four thousand. And this was due to some expenses related to the, uh, planning consultant in the GIS system project. Public safety remained comparable. Public works remained fairly comparable, same as wrecking culture. And then you can see at the far right of the screen is the transfers, which did decrease from four hundred and seventy eight thousand to four hundred and eight thousand during fiscal year twenty three. Any questions on the general fund before we switch to capital projects? No? Okay. Let me keep rolling on. So capital projects fund had a total fund balance of seven hundred and nine thousand dollars at year end. As I mentioned in the beginning, thirty nine thousand of this is restricted, uh, of impact fees with the remaining seven hundred thousand, um, as assigned. Overall, there was a deficiency of revenues under expenditures of a hundred and seventy one thousand in fiscal year twenty three versus an excess or positive of fifty eight thousand in fiscal year twenty two. Uh, capital projects fund revenues were five hundred and forty five thousand plus the four hundred and eight thousand dollar transfer from the general fund. But they did, capital project fund revenues did see an overall decrease of two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty two. As you can tell in the first, uh, columns, it was mainly a decrease in the intergovernmental revenues, which mainly mean our grant revenues as the ADA ramp project was completed in fiscal year twenty two and that project did not continue. There was an uptick in miscellaneous revenue from about twenty three thousand to a hundred and forty two thousand. And this was due to the town receiving about a hundred and thirteen thousand from the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the Silo Hill Project during fiscal year twenty three. On the expense side of things in the capital projects fund, uh, for fiscal year twenty three, they're about one point one million, which was a sixty six thousand dollar decrease from the prior fiscal year. General government expenses did about double from fiscal year twenty two from two hundred and two thousand to four hundred and thirteen thousand. This was due to a lot of expenses incurred during the year related to stormwater management and GIS updates. Public safety expenses, uh, saw a, a significant increase as well. License plate reader system as well as the business district project during the year. And as I mentioned with the revenues, the ADA ramp project was completed. So those related expenses decreased in the public works category. Uh, next, we're going to focus that looking at the enterprise funds, which are the water and sewer fund of the town. We'll start with the water fund, which had a net position of six point one million dollars at year end. Of this net position, uh, net investment in capital assets was six point one million. There was two hundred and fifty nine thousand restricted, uh, related to those surcharge fees for expendable maintenance and improvements and had an unrestricted fund balance of a negative two hundred and seventy nine thousand. Overall, the water fund saw an op, operating loss of a hundred and forty four thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty three. After you account for your non-operating revenues and expenses such as investment income, rental income, interest expense, there was overall a positive change in net position of fifty four hundred dollars for the water fund in fiscal year twenty three. Here's the operating outlook, operating revenues outlook of the water fund compared to fiscal year twenty two. Overall, the water fund had total operating revenues of five hundred and eleven thousand, which was a two hundred and forty thousand or thirty two percent decrease from the prior year. And as we can see from the bar graph, that came from our charges for services decreasing from about seven hundred and forty thousand to five hundred and five thousand. What caused this decrease is the reduction in tap fees year over year. Fiscal year twenty two, twenty two homes, um, were added and had tap fees versus only three homes in fiscal year twenty three. On the expense side of things, um, total expenses were six hundred and sixty eight thousand, which was about a ninety eight thousand dollar decrease from the prior year. You can see most of the decrease came in the personnel category decreasing from about three hundred and sixty three thousand to two hundred and fifty three thousand. This was due to the retirement of a long-term personnel and that position being filled by someone not at his level at the moment. Operating expenses, depreciation and interest expense all remained comparable year over year. Last one is the sewer fund, which had a ending net position of nineteen point eight million. Of the nineteen point eight million, fourteen point nine was invested in capital assets. Seven hundred and forty six thousand was restricted, uh, for expendable maintenance and improvements and four point two million remain unrestricted. The sewer fund also saw an operating loss in fiscal year twenty three of approximately four hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Overall, the change in net position was still a decrease of three hundred and ninety four thousand after accounting for the non-operating revenues and expenses. Again, those being investment income, rental income and interest expense. As you can expect, similar to the water fund, um, the charges for services decreased dramatically due to the reduction in tap fees. Uh, charges for services were one point two million in fiscal year twenty two and nine hundred and forty five thousand in fiscal year twenty three. And the sewer fund also has a slight grant income every year from, um, the state. Overall, total operating revenues were nine hundred and eighty seven thousand, which was a two hundred and eight thousand dollar decrease from the prior year. The expenses of the sewer fund were one point five million, a hundred and twenty two thousand dollar increase from fiscal year twenty two. Personnel expenses did increase from about three hundred and thirteen thousand to four hundred and four thousand. Again, more efforts, um, in the sewer fund during the year due to just priorities and projects versus the water fund. Operating expenses remained comparable, depreciation comparable, as well as our overall interest expense. Any questions about any of the financial data before we look at, uh, internal controls?
The only question I have is the debt service. I'm assuming that's probably seventy five, eighty percent related to the sewer plant.
Yes, I do believe the sewer fund holds the majority of, of the debt. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, your audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. And as a result, we're required to look at your internal controls over financial reporting. And, and I, anything that meets the definition of a material weakness or a significant deficiency in your internal control, uh, we are required to communicate that to you in writing. So the next two slides are going to highlight the deficiencies.
The first finding is the material weakness, finding number one, which is internal controls over grant billings and reconciliations. As a result of our audit procedures, we did find two material adjustments that were recorded to properly recognize grant revenues for the capital projects, water and sewer fund. It appears that practice of the town is not to request reimbursement for expended grant funds until the project is final and complete. Due to this practice, the town incurs grant expenses and the related grant income is not requested or received on a timely basis. So there's a mismatch in grant revenues agreeing to related grant expenditures for the governmental funds of the town. In addition, it appears the town needs a better reconciliation process amongst the individuals responsible for processing and billing the grant awards and the town accountant to ensure grants are recorded in the accounting system as expected. As we mentioned in the beginning, we had some adjustments related to grants. So there's an overall decrease in grant revenues amongst the three funds as follows. Hundred and twenty seven thousand in the capital projects fund, thirty six thousand in the water fund and forty one thousand of the sewer fund. So we recommended the town review its current policies of our grant billings and amend is considered necessary to ensure your grant funds are requested within a timely manner after the expenditure has been incurred. If the grant does allow for progress billings, it would be best practice to bill as the funds are expended and not hold off until the project is complete. Also, we recommend the town review its current reconciliation practices amongst the grants and accounting departments to ensure grant-related revenues are recorded in your accounting system as expected. So I will pause there if you have any questions before we move to the second finding.
Does this material weakness relate to the funds that were identified? When, uh, the mayor made, uh, an audit, sort of an informal audit or visit with, uh, the town, the, the banks with which the town is doing business. Does this tie into that or is that a separate piece?
That's, that's totally separate.
Separate item. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else? The second finding, again, which was less severe than a material weakness, is the significant deficiency, which was related to internal controls or financial reporting. In addition to the above adjustments that we noted in the grant finding, we identified two other audit adjustments that were corrected as detailed below. We've recorded a hundred and seventy three thousand of capital infrastructure cost and the related payable at year end in the sewer fund. And we adjusted the lessor receivables and related income, which we spoke about in the first slide. The cause, it appears the above entries were an oversight during the financial close process at year end. The overall effect is there's a potential risk that the internal financial statements of the town are not fairly stated when entries are missed during the month and year end close. So we recommended the town review its financial close and reporting process and make changes as determined applicable to ensure your transactions are properly recorded. Any questions there or about anything we presented or in general?
Nope. I'm good.
Anybody else? You will, you will work with Kim to help get those recommendations into place and.
Yeah. So the, so the town is required to provide a response to the findings, which are included in your audit report. Again, just to save on space and words, we did not, um, include those. So town management did address the findings and provide a written response that appeared appropriate. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
I will fall asleep.
No? No?
Do you want us to address your question on the, uh, separate enterprise funds?
Only if it's what I want to hear. Yes, please.
We don't know.
Then that's a.
We'll tell you the right answer.
I'd like to hear your opinion so I can add mine.
While it is appropriate for it to be combined, what the town of Emmitsburg has done is the best practice. And I'm sure back in the day, again, uh, you don't have to have an enterprise fund, but the intent of an enterprise fund is to be able to track and account for, uh, related expenditures that are funded by user fees so that you have an idea as to whether or not you're making a profit or a loss. So at the time in which, again, many, many moons ago, when the town of Emmitsburg decided we need to pull it out of the general fund because we want to see whether or not these business activities are making money or not, they made the decision to separate them out. And I bet you, if you ask those other municipalities, if they wish they would have done it, and I bet they wish they would have done it too.
No, they do have a separate enterprise fund.
Right. But it's, it's much easier to have them separate.
Okay. Some of those municipalities may not have had both sewer and water. A lot of the municipalities in the state have one or the other or neither.
We do work with several that do have a, again, they call it a utility fund.
Right.
And it covers their water and sewer operations, but.
But they're still tracking all revenue and all expenses separately via separate departments and still analyzing pulling data separately.
Uh, yes, yes, they are.
To, you know, do fee studies and all of that. So whether it's two separate funds or one fund, everything is still kind of getting tracked separately.
Okay, yeah, the work group I was in, there was eight of us. And we were the only ones that had the two separate funds and they, they kind of looked at me like I had two heads. I went, oh.
Were they similar sized municipalities?
Uh, yeah, pretty, pretty much, uh, Middletown, for example.
Right.
Yeah. Was one of them, so, okay, great.
Okay. Well, thank you guys so much. Again, thanks to the town and their staff, uh, for all their audit preparation. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that leads us on to our next agenda item here, consideration and approval, the bid for the DePaul Street Water Line. So this is in each one of our packets, um, soon we've all looked at and read it. We've heard much about it, so first off, do we have a motion to accept staff's recommendations? Which really, I guess, would be Fox Associates as well.
Which one are we looking at? The Paul Street?
Paul Street.
Would be, the recommendation would be to go with, um, WF Delauter in the amount of eight hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand. And sixty three cents, um, on page thirty nine is the engineer's recommendation as well.
Mr. Hoover, you're looking for a motion, is that correct?
Looking for a motion to, I guess, accept or reject the recommendation.
Um, I make a motion to accept the bid as presented by WF Delauter and Son Incorporated of Emmitsburg, Maryland. And the amount of eight hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty three cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Right here, a motion and a second, motion made by Commissioner Donald, second by Commissioner. Um, any additional discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Um, so the bid came in lower than what we had set aside after the grant money and the ARPA designated funds. So are we going to use less of the grant money or less of the ARPA designated money? And then what are we going to do with the remaining money, which I'm calculating to be about two hundred and sixty thousand, almost two hundred and sixty one thousand.
I have the ARPA chart under a different agenda item to see the breakout.
Yeah.
Um, so the difference would come out of the ARPA funding. And we do have several projects in the works for, to use up all of the ARPA funding, which I just had Addy confirm. I was told the designation due date is December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Um, so we will expend all of ARPA money. By then, obligated by then.
On a different, the remaining would go to a different project.
Yeah, we have a couple of projects, um, in the works to come to your attention.
And then just so our bidding file is complete and accurate at the end of the day. Under timeline, it has smart parking meters purchased and installation on the DePaul Street Water Line page. We could correct that.
Yeah, this was just for your records. We do have an actual bid tabulation sheet, but we will fix that, um, for the record.
That's all I have.
Uh, the only question I have is Fox Associate had any concerns with the, because the engineer's estimate appears to be one point two, was it? One point two million and came in significantly lower.
Correct. Yeah, they reviewed the bid from WF Delauter and they were satisfied with all the requirements and their bid tabulations.
Good, enough.
I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
But that's all I wanted to make sure that our, our engineer is is comfortable that the price submitted falls way below the engineer's estimate. The, the engineer is satisfied that he meets the, that he can do the job for the money presented.
His, his letters attached here.
Yes.
I got that, okay.
So for Fox and Associates, I realize that, um, we use Fox and ours, also RK and K engineering. So they, I mean, do we have contracts with both of those companies to review all of our bids and serve as project managers on our project?
So Fox and Associates shows, Associates was selected as the engineer for this project through a bidding process. And yes, there is a contract in place for this project with Fox and Associates. RK and K is an engineer, excuse me, on different projects and they were awarded those projects through RFPs. And there are contracts with them to manage these projects as well.
So for this particular project, Fox was selected based on a, an, uh, request for proposals?
Yes, through a bidding process.
And what is the cost for their services for this project and where does that money come from?
I don't have that in front of me and that money came through the funding for the project, as you can see on page thirty six. Um, we received a grant from CDBG in the amount of five hundred and fifty two thousand, five hundred dollars. And we received a second grant from MNE in the amount of two hundred and seventy seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And then the remaining will come through ARPA. This project's fully funded through grant monies.
So the actual cost is not really eight hundred and forty nine thousand, because that doesn't cover the engineering cost.
Correct, that's the, that's the construction cost alone. The total estimated cost of the project was one point two million dollars.
So there really aren't remaining funds left over.
There, there will be, because the estimated, the estimated cost, oh gosh, I can't. The estimated construction cost was more than what WF Delauter's bid was. So there will be ARPA money left over. I need to wait for the contractor to put all the numbers to get, to give me the final total estimated cost.
So there's one point two really isn't the engineer's estimate for the project, if they fully loaded cost.
It was at the beginning when they estimated what the construction cost was, with the engineering costs, the design costs, permitting costs, all the costs associated with it, plus the construction cost. We utilized the number of one point two one seven million dollars to apply for the grant funding. That was the estimated cost at the beginning of the project. Now that concrete numbers are coming in, that number gets adjusted.
All right, now, I, I was looking at that as the engineer's assessment for just the construction, okay. So then that, then the eighth, then the eight forty nine doesn't concern me, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Donald?
Uh, just a contingency, we do have a contingency built in if we have a change order.
Yes.
What we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay, again, great, just confirming, thank you.
All right, well, no further discussion, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I have a motion, I have a second, so call for a vote for all those in favor of the motion. Aye.
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 Motion carries four oh. Next agenda item is for consideration approval of the biz for the three-year trash contract service. Same thing, do we have a motion to, to accept staff's recommendations as presented you have in the package? Right, page here. The staff's recommendation is to stay with, stay with, right?
Yes.
Stay with Republic Service and it looks like their bid is it was a couple of dollars in the end, it's a couple of dollars cheaper than the next, the next bid.
Yeah, their total bid would be with, including the trash service yard waste and bulk trash is a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars.
So they are the lowest bidder, um, carry the same price all three years, all three years.
So I make a motion to accept the Republic Services bid, Republic Services from Frederick, Maryland, excuse me, uh, in the sum of one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty two dollars. As supported by the notes, do I need to go into the?
Just staff recommendations, good.
Okay, so, um, I'll keep it clipped then. All right, therefore, cleaning it up, I therefore, uh, make a motion to accept the Republic Services of Frederick, Maryland bid in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty two dollars. Um, for.
Can you add that it's a three-year trash cert contract?
For a three-year contract for the trash removal for the town of Emmitsburg.
Motion that may be, Commissioner Donald, is there a second?
I'll second it. I do have one, uh, that's something to say after.
Let me get there, so a motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one, um, I noticed the, on Saint Joseph Lane, coming out onto North Seaton Avenue. The trash truck is tearing the heck out of the, the, uh, the, um, state highway or North Seaton Avenue. You'll see it when you go out, it's, it's got great big deep grooves and, when the truck dragging, I don't know if they I've stopped going out that way, I'll just go in that way, I don't know, you know, one, one direction on it. When you put the new paving down, stuff for the new road, they're going to tear the heck out.
Right.
That's the only reason why I would bring it up.
Okay, I'll, um, staff will get ahold of them tomorrow and see what we can do.
There's like twenty or thirty big deep grooves from the trash truck dragging.
Okay.
All right, any additional comments?
Yes, thank you. So same as before, remove the reference to the smart parking meters. Um, do we know the cost of the current contract and what the increase is, if any?
Um, just going forward, yes, you'll see the smart meter, parking meter on each one of these. Just as an oversight wasn't crossed out, so it's going to be on each one of these. And I forgot my notes at my desk, but currently we pay five dollars and forty cents per unit. Um, so there is an increase of two dollars and sixty cents per unit. Um, I believe the yard waste is about the same. And so is the, the bulk trash is the same. So the only increase is going to be the per unit, um, increase.
And is the trash service billed to residents through the water bill? Or it, does it come out of the general fund as part of taxes?
So it's, it's billed, it's on your water sewer and trash bill, quarterly bill that you receive, however, trash is in the general fund. So all revenue and expenses are in the general fund for trash services.
So it's collected as part of the water bill and then pulled, the revenue is taken from the water fund and moved to the general fund.
I think it's, however, it's entered in, it goes, it, it's not pulled from the water fund, they're allocated differently. It'll go to, you know, the portion that goes to the water fund, the portion that goes to sewer fund, the portion that goes to the trash fund. It's divvied up through the revenue and the accounting side.
Once it's received.
Correct.
At receiving.
Right, but there's a line item on the water bill that says trash.
Yes.
And that revenue is taken from that fund and put in the general fund.
You have trash and you have tipping fee?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the tipping fee?
Tonnage, the tonnage for the, how much cost?
And that varies, um, from quarter to quarter based off of how much trash is collected and taken to landfill. And we receive that bill from Frederick County.
So you pay eight dollars and thirty cents per unit, per house, and then whatever the tonnage fee, tonnage is.
Is the tonnage billed through the water bill?
That's your tipping fee?
Is that shown on the water bill?
Yes.
That's why we try to encourage the recycling idea, so we tip less.
Is, is there a bulk pickup this month or next month?
April first.
Somewhere.
Sixth, April sixth.
I was gonna say, because I've seen one of the houses on North Seaton's already got all the bulk, all their stuff sitting now for the bulk pickup.
It's a little early. It should be April, April sixth.
Speaking of bulk trash, one, another subject, I guess, but county allows two mattresses a year. Cause what, was what, what I was, somebody asked me about, so when does the year start and is it calendar year, fiscal year? How do they know?
Ours is done, our bulk trash is calendar year, so it would be two, eight, one in April, one in October.
So whatever anybody done last year.
Correct, is gone.
Is gone, okay.
Just make sure if you're doing a mattress, you fill out the affidavit through the town.
I'll let them know. That's all I got, uh, any additional discussion? All right, I have a motion, we have a second, um, so call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carries four oh, thank you.
Real quick, I do have your engineering amount for Fox and Associates on the water line. It's, um, thirty six thousand, seven hundred and ninety five. Was their estimate for engineering for the water line.
All right, next agenda item is the consideration approval of the prefab restroom concession stand for a building at E U G Myers Park, and again, that is in the agenda package.
It's probably easier if you jump to page, um, forty nine, probably be easier to understand.
You know, I asked for the same thing, do we have a, do we have a motion to accept the staff recommendation?
I actually need two motions, Commissioner Hoover.
For?
Um, I need a motion, um, based off of the engineering's request. Fox and Associates recommends the Board of Commissioners reject both bids based off the engineer certification letter. We received two, two bids from, uh, one from Warner Construction and one from Rockwell Construction Company. Um, they have basic, submitted bids based off the Smith Midland Building that our project was designed off, off of. Um, and the town can purchase it through sole source at two seventeen, one twenty four. Which is about a seventy five thousand dollar savings, that's the engineer's, um, request, his letter is on page.
Seen that.
Yeah, whatever page his letter's on.
Does our contract allow for us to, to, to?
Our code allows it, I checked with, um, Leslie Powell, our town attorney. Um, because it's basically a sole source item, this building was designed, our the building, or the project was designed off this building and both, um, contractors submitted the same building with, um, inflated price. And the town can then purchase it straight from the manufacturer for about seventy five thousand dollars less.
It's not coming from Amazon.
No, and I did confirm with Ms. Powell.
Okay, and like I said, I just didn't know how the RFP was written, that these posts, how they bid on it. Okay.
Do we need a motion to table this therefore? Do we actually need a motion, Mr. Hoover, sorry?
I think, uh, so if we get the motion to accept the low bidder. It's towns.
So Ms. Powell's recommendation was to reject.
Yeah.
Reject Warner Construction and Rockwell Construction's bid and accept the estimate from Smith Midland for two seventeen, one twenty four. That's her recommendation. I don't think I wrote that in there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, before you go to the, uh, to request a motion for a vote, can we just have a general discussion first?
You got a question?
You, you were, you, you're.
I'm, I'm actually trying to get clarification on, we're trying to do, sorry. Pardon me, I'm trying to get clarification, um, when we do come to making motions, is the intent to do two motions? One rejecting the set and the second motion advocating for Midland, is that accurate?
Smith Midland.
Smith Midland, thank you, okay, I've got it circled, but I don't have that.
So what is it, Smith Midland is allowing, I mean, so Smithland is only trying to read on there real quick now. They're also providing us the building.
Correct.
Smith Midland is.
Smith Midland, Smith Midland would provide the building at two seventeen, one twenty four.
The building.
The building.
So at that point, we're just buying a building?
Correct, you get the building and the delivery and then we have to bid out for the, um, fieldwork. So when we, we broke it, when the engineer and I broke it down, um, if you look at Warner Construction, and make it easier for you. The Warner Construction's bid was three hundred and fifty two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, which includes the building, construction services, project management, field supervision and site requirements. However, it did not, it did not include the site work preparation for the building structure and they're saying that's an estimated one hundred and thirty nine thousand. Which would make their total cost approximately four hundred and ninety two thousand. Rockwell Construction, their bid was two hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred and twenty eight, which includes the general conditions and building and does not include site work preparation. Our engineer estimates site preparation. and does not include site work preparation. Our engineer estimates site preparation to be between forty and fifty thousand, which would make their, their price between three hundred and thirty-six and three hundred and forty-six thousand. If the board approves purchasing the building from Smith Midland at two seventeen, one twenty-four, an estimating high at field work of fifty thousand dollars, the total cost for the building and field work would be two sixty-seven, one twenty-four, which is roughly a minimum of seventy thousand dollar savings. Does that help?
Well, but there's other cost on here. Um, you know, for the water line and the electric. I mean, those costs just don't go away.
They're already budgeted. There are, that's, that was the estimate. So the estimate when we applied for grants, we took the eleven hu- or eleven thousand dollar estimate for engineering, a fourteen thousand, seven hundred for the construction administration, the electric for seventeen thousand, four hundred. Um, the estimate for the water line, sewer line, we estimated the building at two seventeen, one twenty-four, and we estimated the site prep for fifty thousand. So our total estimated cost of the project was three twenty-three, four eighty-nine. Some of these costs have already been spent. I know Maddie's on the call. Um, she may be able to tell you which ones have already been spent, but these were all included in that final estimated cost.
So it sounds like what we really want to, like you said, is to make a motion to not accept the bids. Period. And then make a motion to for staff to purchase and re, purchase the, the building directly and advertise for the connection.
For the field work.
Of the new fills.
For the field work, yes.
And the field work will be done before the building.
Correct.
You would have to.
Yes.
Right, and, and we have water and sewer already there and electrics over there too.
I believe they've completed all of that, yes.
I don't know, it, it feels premature to approve something when we don't know what the cost of the field work's gonna be.
No, no, we're not, we're not approving it. We're not approving that.
Well, if we approve, if we approve the building, okay, the quote for the building has expired. So the cost for the building.
It might stay on there, but it's not.
Say it's, it's, has it expired?
It ha- it hasn't expired. It's, this bid is still good. We confirmed with, this was just the older one we received, I included in here, but we've confirmed that that is still good.
So we're gonna buy a building, but we don't know what the remaining costs are gonna be until we put that out for bid.
Right, and then I come back to this, then that'll come back to this board for.
Right, so it seems premature to buy a building when we don't know what the other costs are gonna be and we're rejecting two other bids that could, they may not come in close to what we receive a bid for. But they could, we don't know. So why would we wanna approve a building when we haven't put an RFP out for the actual site cost? You're comparing apples to oranges. We have two quotes and this, we only have part of a quote. So we're gonna reject something based on a partial quote for part of the cost. We don't know.
So there's a twelve to sixteen week delay on the, the building. Um, and I'm just going off what the engineer recommended. Um, his, his estimate from day one has always been about fifty thousand for site prep.
But we have to get bids.
All right.
From contractors.
We have to get three estimates for anything under fifty thousand.
Well, then what we can do then is you can make the, well, we can make a motion to cancel the bids, re, recreate a new RFP or, or request for bids to, um, provide the site work, cost of site work with the town providing the building. And the town can purchase the building after, after the review proposals. Or if you wanna word it or whomever. Um, but I understand what you're saying, but I think we're all trying to get to the same spot. It's just an error. Us, us buying the building as, as, as one project through, through Smith Midland. And then us also re-advertising the site work to come back out as a new bid and.
And see where it ends up.
I'm assuming we can hold, we can, we can, we don't have to proceed right away with, with the order on the building.
Correct, right. What, what the engineer is saying is Warner and Rockwell have significantly inflated.
Got it.
Through, a- and that's just nor- that's normal business. I'm not saying they did anything wrong. They, they added their cost to the building when the town can purchase it directly and save far much.
Yeah, the only, the only downside of that is if there's any warranties, any issues or whatever, then it's gonna be, we, we will have to deal with that through Smith and Midland.
Correct.
Versus through whomever the.
Correct.
Whoever the contractor is.
Question, Mr. Hoover, is it okay? May I ask?
Yes, sir.
So, um, Ms. Wells' question, um, the water lines are in place in the park, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, to the, wh- where the, the pad would be located, is that correct?
I think there's some final connections that need to be made.
Okay, and the power line is there also that, that work is done?
I believe all the trenching is complete, yes.
Okay, and the, the cable has been set, has been put into the trench, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So what is left on the project once we have the structure? Just, is it just the final ten feet under the, under the pad into the facility or?
You mean for the field work to get ready for the, the building or once it's been set?
Well, I'm assuming we're leveling, we're graveling.
Concrete sidewalk, yes.
And then sidewalk. And then beyond that though.
Sewer hookup and water hookup that had to be put in the building.
The final, yeah, the final hookups, you know, final electric hookup, final water, final sewer hookups. Um, obviously there needs to be a concrete pad put down for the building. Um, sidewalks will have to be put in.
And this is what we're expecting. It's gonna cost about fifty thousand dollars.
Between the forty and fifty thousand, yes.
In forty and fifty, okay. And that was based on the numbers put forward by Fox and Associates, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and these, this is something that we do have funds for at this time.
Yeah, it was part of the grant, um, the grant funding and the town match that was required.
I'm sorry, let me clarify my question. I'm sorry. So the, the site work is also part of that grant funding, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the, the two grants total two hundred and ten thousand.
Right.
And the first grant, we paid twenty-five percent of the total cost. So is that our match of the one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar grant?
Yes.
Paid twenty-five percent of that?
Yes.
And was that approved in the FY twenty-four budget review?
It was approved.
Twenty-three.
It was either in twenty-two or twenty-three's capital project, um, fund two and the general fund, fund two capital projects, cash match.
So there's a line item currently in the budget for.
Yeah, it's in department sixty. It's called town, town cash match or town grant match in fund two.
Okay, so there was two hundred and ten available in grants. We paid twenty-five percent of the one hundred and forty-seven thousand. So two-ten won't cover the cost. Where will the additional money come from?
Well, we're required to have the twenty-five percent match.
Of one forty-seven?
Yes, I have.
That's what it said on the grant report. It just looks like we're gonna be short. So I'm just, if, if the total cost ends up being around three hundred and twenty-three thousand, we're like a hundred K short.
We're actually only, I just, I did all the math and everything. We're fifteen thousand dollars short. Um.
Okay, maybe when it comes back to the board, you could just put the figures there.
So, so if the, and I'll just be upfront, if the field estimate come, field work comes in under fifty thousand dollars, that's something that's approved at the mayor's level. Per the code, we're still required to get three written estimates, but the mayor then can approve the estimate, um, for the field work.
Well, wouldn't the field work include the water and sewer line and the trenching? And so, I mean, we're gonna break this up. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's all in it. It's all included in it.
No, they're different line items. By Fox.
You're gonna bring.
Site prep is fifty. You got the water line, the sewer line.
No, they won't be second, but that'd be.
They're already done. They've already done and paid for.
I thought there was still work to be done.
Very minimal, very minimal work.
It's the, um.
Did the RFP request that that work be done or that was RFP clear that the work was already done? So their bid didn't include.
That, they, they, yeah, the bid did not include, um, where's your RFP?
Likes to come up out of the floor to go out to the meet the sewer line that we have already installed in place.
To the rough ends.
So it's the roughen, and part.
So the grant funding that we have, it's various pots of money. Um, the fiscal year twenty-two LPI grant of forty thousand dollars, a fiscal year twenty-two POS grant of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty. Uh, we have leftover LPI grant money and the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety leftover FY twenty-three POS money and three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars leftover CP and MP, which is Community Park and Memorial Park Pavilion, grant money in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three thousand plus our grant match. Uh, we are short fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, those additional grant monies that you mentioned weren't on the actual grant report for this.
They're, they're, they're under different grants, um, that Ms. Shaw has been working with the state to be reverted or not reverted to be, um, allocated to this project. So it's not complete yet, but they've said that we can do it. So. That's why it's not showing on there yet. But this was her email I got from her on Wednesday. So there's additional thirty-three, thirty-five, additional thirty-five thousand in grant money from the state that we can get to put towards this project.
Yeah, we'll have to see where the bid comes in.
My only concern with tabling this is, uh, this company has already, uh, given us, uh, three months of the, of the same price. Uh, the Smith Midland, their, their bid was only supposed to be good, uh, till January and they've already, we're gonna be going into April or May. And, uh, while we think we might be trying to save money, we could very well not be, and the price could be going up.
It will go up.
Yeah. Mr. Hoover, can I go ahead and do the motions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Wells, for clarity's sake, uh, one motion to reject the two proposals, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to reject proposals from Warner Construction and Rockwell Construction related to the bathroom concession stand project in the E Eugene Myers Park.
What motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made in second. Any other discussion? Here or none? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one, Commissioner Turner, question abstain, or I'm sorry, um, nay. All right, so let's take care of that. Then, then is there a motion?
Mr. Hoover?
About the, um, purchase of the building itself from, for the town to purchase the building. Is there a motion for the town to purchase the prefab building? And to re-advertise the prefab, what could be, site work.
Site workers, site prep, does it matter for clarity's sake? Does that matter to staff? No, okay, all right. Uh, therefore I make a motion to purchase the bathroom concession stand structure from Smith Midland in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and seek a, a rebid for the site work to complete the project. Staff, for clarity's sake, does that satisfy what you're, what you need in the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoover, is that aligned with what you were saying also?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you, sir.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, motion been made in second. Any further discussion?
To clarify, are you motioning to approve the building purchase upfront before we have bids for the site construction portion?
That's correct because of the risk that we're facing and the cost increasing.
Any additional discussion? Here or none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those nay?
Nay.
Motion carries three, one, return quest, nay. All right, this is on to our next agenda item. For consideration approval of the backwash project for the wastewater treatment plant. All right, so again, we have a agenda items here, a package for this, um, estimated value is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, a hundred and forty, eight hundred, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, ten cents. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation by staff based, based on what we have in our agenda package?
So move.
Which may have a Commissioner Sweeney, is there a second?
Second, second, sorry.
Motion made in second. Any additional comment?
Uh, just, do we have a project manager recommendation on, on this project?
It'll be Control Systems twenty-one, which is the vendor.
So we don't have a project ma- an engineer recommendation from RK and K or Fox? Is the question?
No.
No third party.
This is a third-party vendor who is very familiar with our water treatment plant and the backwash process and the valve equipment that's necessary. This will be funded through ARPA.
And we didn't have to put on RFP because it's a sole source?
Yes, that's correct.
Any additional comments, questions? Here are no additional questions. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries four, four zero. Final agenda item. For consideration approvals, change order number two for the Creamy Road Pump Station. So earlier in the last week, I believe it was, we got information from the mayor, uh, we was the mayor, anyway, about the, um, the need for this change order due to a, I don't know, we call it a large pass tank, whatever it was underground.
Yeah, they believe it was a, um, temporary wet well that was installed during the construction of the current slash old pump station. So fifty-plus years ago. Um, it did not show up on any plans. It was, uh, completely unexpected.
And this change order is in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents, correct?
Correct.
The motion to, to accept change order, I guess it's change order number one, right?
Change order number two.
Number two, okay. The motion to accept change order number two in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents.
I, I move.
All right, motion been, motion, motion been made. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any additional conversation?
Yeah, this is just the, we, it wasn't connected to anything. It was just a wet well.
Correct.
So they'll charge in a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, just take the concrete slab or.
No, so they have to fill it. Um, they have to stabilize it. Um, a lot of it was excavation, but they have to stabilize it and they have to fill it with a, um, permeable substance um, before it can be removed.
A flow outside or?
Um, correct. I have it. Is that what it is? Okay, um, and then once it's, it's stabilized, once it's been filled and then they can remove it.
Okay. Any idea how many gallons that thing was?
I know it was twenty by twenty by something else. I don't remember the exact dimensions.
It looks like a bunker. I mean, truly. Like a old war bunker.
Concrete vault.
Yeah. Um, just as an aside on this, and this is where I, I apologize, I didn't get to you this week to ask this question, but would there be any merit to cracking it? Sorry, to, um, using, uh, ordinance, dynamite, cliferin?
Um, I'm not an engineer, so I'm gonna leave that up to the, the people that do this. Um, our engineer is, that's their recommendation. It's the contractor's recommendation. So I will defer to them.
So our engineer came forward with this?
Yes, okay, yes. They, I have the engineer's recommendation. Um, this is a not-to-exceed change order. So it's, it's not to exceed the hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, and Mr. Hoover, you said something that I didn't hear.
If they would break it up, you know, dynamite or whatever, we would pay for the dynamite, you'd pay for the, cause then you'd have to excavate it. And then you'd have to backfill it with something and then you had to compact it and, and, and get the, um, compaction down to about ninety-five. And then you'd have to backfill it with something and then you had to compact it and, and, and get the, um, compaction down to about ninety five percent compaction. So the hundred, so the hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the end may be a much better way to go. So now if it's a twenty by twenty by ten, it's probably about a thirty thousand gallon tank. If it's twenty ten foot, ten foot tall. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any, any additional discussion?
Yeah, what does the second quote in the package for sixty five thousand?
Where, where, where are you looking at, I'm sorry?
Um, it's attached to the packet for the Creamery Road.
Change order number two?
I'm sorry.
Is it the change order number two, one?
Um, it's the one we're discussing now, there's a quote for a hundred and twelve thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was a quote in the package for sixty four thousand nine seventy.
That's just for the, that's just for the, um, that company, the CJ G E O. They're the ones that are gonna come in and fill the concrete thing with the, um, cellular co- cellular concrete. So that's just for, that's part of the hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
So they would be the subcategory under the quote for a hundred and twelve.
Right, they're part of what makes up that hundred and twelve, that's the vendor. Correct, yeah, that's correct.
Any additional discussion? You're none in call. Vote, um, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And nays? Here are none, motion carries. That covers us for tonight for all our agenda items and that puts us into the selection of meeting agenda for April the first.
Excuse me, okay, I have several items. Excuse me, for admin business in April, I have three proclamations. The first one is gonna be for consideration, proclamation declaring April twenty twenty four Child Abuse Prevention Month. Number two, for consideration proclamation declaring April twenty second, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four Earth Day in the town of Emmitsburg. Number three, for consideration proclamation declaring April Fair Housing Month. And then the actual agenda items, number one will be approval of the water treatment plant clarifier construction bid for consideration. Number two, approval of bid for engineering services for the Emmitsburg Dam inspection as required by M D E for consideration. Number three, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty three budget transfers for consideration. Number four, approval of ordinance twenty four dash oh one to amend title ten. Vehicles allowing for forty eight hour parking on East and West Main Street for consideration. Number five, approval of ordinance twenty four dash oh two to amend title ten to remove the red citation box from the square for consideration.
That needs to be an agenda item?
Yes, because it's a code change. Because it's in the code that allows you to put your parking tickets in there. So.
Is there a reason?
No, one, one, nobody uses it and two, it's a request from the Public Works Director.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Donald, you have anything for the meeting, you wanna, an agenda item?
No agenda items, um, I have an informal one related to the twenty third and twenty fourth.
I'll get to that.
So that's a, a later item.
Oh, twenty third and twenty fourth.
Uh, volunteer workdays. Informal request of the board. Beyond that, nothing, no, sir.
Mr. Turner, question, anything for the April first meeting? Agenda item?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No, I know.
All right, so, so we got the water treatment bid, we got the dam inspection bid, we got the building tran- the budget transfers, forty eight hour parking, that's been talked about a few times and famous red box removal. Plus three, three proclamations to do.
Correct.
Motion, motion to accept the proposed April first agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Here are none, call for, call for question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries four zero.
We are also scheduled for a meeting March eighteenth.
Getting there.
Okay.
Getting there, sure. So, so March eighteenth is a workshop that we've got planned for, discussed a while back, and that was most primarily to discuss water rates as well as the water capacity. Uh, a little bit of both, um, I think that's the primary two things that we have talked about that we wanted to have discussed. Do I have that right? Different?
So, uh, did we set the date for the March eighteenth or is that when we talked about having it?
What, what do you, what do you mean, did we set the date?
I think that's what we agreed upon at the last, uh, meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, that, that is already the agreed upon date, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, that is the agreed upon date. So, so that was the two agenda items that I know, what we talked about and discussed and why we wanted to have this meeting. Anything else or?
I think that'll take up probably the best part of the evening, yes.
All right, that'd be just a workshop, so there'd be no actions, just discussions. Um, like I said, that's, that's just to talk about the two, the two topics of uh, current water rates as well as the, um, water capacity, um, and, and what if any concerns?
For clarification, for staff's point of view, what, um, please send me an email if, or let me know, what are you looking for as far as water capacity? What information would you like to have staff have available? Or is it just gonna be discussion?
Yeah. I, I think, I think most of it for water capacity is probably gonna be written in your town manager report, I mean, we used, you use an average, would you tell me, three twenty four? Three, yeah, no, two thirty nine, you use two thirty nine in water. On average, what's the plant's capacity, the plant's capacity is like three seventy five or something like that?
Yeah, we'll have all those numbers for you.
That's, that would be the thing to say, okay, well, because I know we got some potentially other developments and potentially some current uh, business moving to town, one that may use a high volume of water actually and, um, but, so. Where, where do we go from here? Because we're gonna, we, if we're not very close, we're gonna soon be very close to our, our max capacity with or without the mill. And that's all I have, a, a, anything else?
Mr. Hoover, um, not an agenda item and my apologies to the board on this one. Meant to add this, the Fred Rock Disc Club is having an event on April first, uh, April Fool's Day appropriately enough. It's a Monday, unique, but also, uh, they are, uh, hoping to discuss having porta potties there. So I think that's kind of timely with the bathroom that we're talking about for the park, that a need exists. Uh, the other side of it is, I'm hoping to invite everybody to a trail day that's been postponed two other times already. Uh, you have your choice, it's a Saturday and a Sunday, uh, the twenty third and the twenty fourth of this month. I would almost call it a trail extravaganza. So if you wanna come out and see what the heck we're doing and I would feed you, you are welcome to come and observe and hopefully, um, see that, uh, we're getting some bang for our buck from our volunteers. Thank you.
What are you feeding?
Um, in the morning, we have a sponsor, Redhead Soda Bread, so they get soda bread and some, uh, pastries. I also bring out, uh, it's a longstanding tradition, peanut M and M's. We have OJ, we've got water, we've got, uh, donuts. And we have McDonald's food, the, the sandwiches. And then in the afternoon, if folks stick around, we either have a barbecue, uh, when we reserve in the park, if it's still available, or, uh, we go to pizza. Sometimes people come from so far out of the area that it's easier for them to head out and I think that's what we should do, so I'll be quiet.
All right, so there are no, no, um, text amendments or resolutions, none of those to sign tonight, so. That brings us to the closure of our meeting, so do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Paying a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.